...in the early 20th century when municipalities were being really, well, not like they're not now, but really dumped on by special legislation at the state level where they would just pass a law just to govern Youngstown at the state level and say, "We're going to let the railroad run their, you know, their engine down Main Street," or something like that. You know, there were people who gathered back then. We don't study those histories, but today maybe just kind of a continuation of some of those popular efforts to open up our government to the will of the people. And so stick with it. What's your next steps? You know, I think that's something for you and the group and talking with us and city council to map out.
Okay, the next question. Lynn, thank you for your-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackie Adair. I'm a resident of the 2nd Ward, East Side. I don't know if any of you or many of you know that East Side residents, many East Side residents have already experienced the consequences of environmental damage. There's a cluster on the east side of African Americans who have developed MS as a result of some things that happened probably in the 1800s to the environment, coal mining and those kinds of things. So everybody, we do need to pay very close attention to this fracking thing. We also know that surrounding, the surrounding suburban communities are signing leases, fracking leases, drilling leases with these drilling companies. And so far, in the inner, in the city of Youngstown, to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have not had a fracking well drilled in the city. We have been, the East Side, there are residents on the East Side who have been approached to sign away their rights by some of these drilling companies, people on Early Road, for example. And so my question, I guess, is this. So, so far, again, to my knowledge, we have injection wells. One out on 422 and some folks out there are having some issues with that. How will this ordinance, or how will this bill, or whatever you call it, will it have any effect on what's going on around us, or will it only affect the, you know, in effect within the boundaries of Youngstown?
So as it's written, how would that affect surrounding communities is the question?
Right, and yeah, and that's a good question. A lot of communities have not included any parts of the bill that would reach extrajurisdictionally. This has some language in it that actually will, and that is, well, you've got some legislation on the books and, you know, I think that it's testing it is maybe one thing that you might do. That says that within a 20-mile limit you have, as a city, the authority to protect your water source. How, you know, how, what does that look like? Well, you know, proposing an ordinance of this sort to say certain activities pose a threat to our water source and therefore banned, that's one way to do it. Another one is that, this is, again, a different kind of law. It's a rights-based law. And so if the community is establishing their right not to be poisoned, and they're doing so by prohibiting certain activities that are likely to result in poisoning. There's also language in here that states that, I'm just paraphrasing, that municipalities or entities like corporations that engage in activities outside of the city that result in a violation of the established rights will be held strictly liable. It's a different approach. It's saying that we can't ban the fracking outside of the city perhaps, but we have recognized these certain rights and we're going to hold you liable if you violate those rights while you're engaging in an activity we've recognized to be a threat to those rights.
Thank you. Next question.
My name is Kathleen Berry and I'm a retired Air Force nurse, most recently retired from the Mahoning County Health Department, and I live in the 4th Ward in Youngstown. And I want to call attention and perhaps be influential in something as a public health nurse that I learned. One of the first things I learned was about the Cuyahoga River fire. And this occurred, and it has reoccurred over the years, but it first occurred in 1868, and it was the basis for developing the Ohio Department of Health and to protect all of us, our safety and our welfare, and most of all, our health. And I want to read something that is, sounds so similar and hopefully will help you to maybe process this whole aspect of what we're experiencing right now. Because of this fire, Cleveland businesses became infamous for their pollution. A legacy of the city's booming manufacturing days during the late 1800s and the early 1900s, when limited government controls existed to protect the environment. Even following World War II, Cleveland businesses, especially steel mills, routinely polluted the river. This sounds familiar here, doesn't it? Cleveland and its residents also became the butt of jokes across the United States despite the fact that city officials had authorized $100 million to improve the Cuyahoga River's water before the fire occurred. The fire also brought attention to other environmental problems across the country and helped spur the environmental movement, hold on, and helped lead to the passage of the Clean Water Act in 1972. And so it seems to me that as citizens who want to be able to pass on to our children, our grandchildren, clean water, that it just behooves us to take the high road with regards to the kinds of endeavors that maybe do make money for people, but in the long run, what will be the outcome? Thank you.
Thank you. And can I remind our speakers that in order of fairness to all speakers, we are asking that you ask a question. This is not to make statements. In respect to Dr. Ray, I asked him to ask a question too, and I want to make sure we're being fair to all people in this meeting that are asking questions, so.
I have a very short question.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Lev. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward. And Ben, I'd like to ask you, what would be the next step if Youngstown adopted this policy? What would be the next step? And from your experience, what has been the next step in other communities that have adopted it?
So post-adoption, if adopted?
Yes, if adopted. What would happen next? Thank you.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that it means if the city is serious about taking a stance of this sort, that you become engaged, community members, city council, become engaged with working with other cities, other communities to move this. Because standing alone, you know, if Youngstown's the only city in Ohio that asserts its rights and says we won't have them violated legally by the state, if it's the only city that does it, it's a lonely place to be. So I think that means having some conversations about how to get out, how to educate people about it. This is a different way of looking at things. It's kind of requires a paradigm shift. And we had members of city council in Pittsburgh going from their city to other cities and talking with people, getting on conference calls, talking to city council members about what had been done in Pittsburgh. We've had township supervisors and borough council members from other communities that have adopted the same types of ordinance, do the same types of things. And we sure have had a lot of residents from those communities reaching out and establishing local outreach committees to go out and do presentations at various public venues in communities that haven't yet taken a stand. That's one thing. Internally, what's the other thing? It's a community bill of rights. And yeah, the focus is on fracking, protecting those rights in terms of fracking. But those rights exist already, and they exist in terms of other issues as well. And so you may want to, as a community, examine building a future that's based on rights, where the highest law is rights, instead of the highest law being profit. Or, and not that profit is a bad thing. It's about, it's about priorities and, you know, we have a nation that's divided over some big issues, and it comes down to certain values. And we don't have to agree on everything. But it's amazing to me, when I go into the communities I work in, I never ever raise the question of anybody's partisan affiliation. Don't need to. Because when it comes to community rights, everybody in the community, I would suggest, well, I won't speak for everybody, but I'm going to guess that most, by and large, most people in any given community, no matter how they vote, what clubs they belong to, what churches they go to, I'll bet you, none of them in general want their kids poisoned. None of them want to live in a place that aesthetically is intolerable, and that's a value that we have the right to assert. None of them, in essence, want to surrender the right to determine the future of their own community. And so what about a conversation that starts there? Because you don't have to be done just because you pass a community bill of rights that bans fracking. That doesn't have to be the end of it.
Next question. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Tim Rarden. I am one of the co-founders of a local group called Guardians of Mill Creek Park, which is a part of the Frack-Free Mahoning Organization as well. I also worked for Greenpeace for eight years in the Midwest Regional Office in Chicago. And I wanted to address a question about the original, what many consider the original root of this problem is the Halliburton loophole. It's often referred to as the Halliburton loophole, which gave exemptions to the fracking industry in regards to the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, Rickera laws. And I wondered if you could expand on and list some of those laws that were built as protections and how the rights space ban, the community bill of rights that you're crafting here addresses those issues?
Just in interest of time, just want to let everyone know, we have about 10 minutes left, so Ben, if you can be concise.
I'm going to be. And with all due respect, I don't know that it's productive to talk about all those specific laws. But it is important to realize that when any one or any industry or single corporation is made exempt from law, the law stands for everyone else. But that privileged entity or person is above the law. Well, we had law like that in our historic past. It was called, you know, the hierarchical culture of the British Empire. And it said people born to the right families were exempt from some laws, and the king was exempt from a lot of laws, and the rest of the people weren't exempt from any laws. And that's what we call tyranny. It comes in small packages and it comes in large packages. But when it arises, it seems to me that we either challenge it or we watch it expand. And so having an industry that needs to be exempt from laws that were intended, you know, by good people of all parties that were involved in getting them adopted, was intended to protect people and communities. To exempt the industry that has the most likely chance of violating those laws from those laws is probably the strongest argument there is, that the industry can't operate in a safe way legally. So the only way to make it legal for them to operate is to make them not have to follow the law. That doesn't mean it's safe. That's the mix-up, and it's kind of a sleight of hand. It's like what magicians do with the coin tricks, you know? They divert your attention and you think the coin went away. Well, the lack of safety didn't go away simply because they exempted the industry from the law. The fact that there aren't any violations of the Clean Water Act by the fracking industry is not a proof that they don't poison water. It's a proof that they are exempt from the law. They're above the law. Now, logic tells us, we can accept that silliness, absurdity. What I like to do is ridicule it because there's nothing better than exposing the absurd with some absurdity.
Thanks. Thank you. Next question.
First off, I have to apologize to a couple people in the audience. I'm not a paranoid person, but I don't put it past the gas and oil industry to plant people to be disruptive, and I'm sorry that I was suspicious of that with anyone in the audience. And again, I'm not a paranoid person, but I've seen how this industry has come here to Youngstown where we have nothing that anyone wants but our water and the oil under the ground. And I don't want my home to become a toxic wasteland either. So I have to apologize to them.
Excuse me, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Liz Compercobb. I live on the west side. My question for Mr. Price, how have you, in your travels and with other city councils and other communities that you've talked with, what kind of corruption have you seen and how have you seen that corruption nullified by justice, by the people? And I mean that, for one thing, I mean, it's questionable that the room is empty of our elected officials today. I'm not going to state names or positions, but we know who's not here today. And also-
I just want to remind the audience that this is a matter of Youngstown's city government. So this is for the city and this is the city-
And the city officials should be here. I'm sorry, it's a really big deal. And another thing that I want to address with, as far as turning corruption around, our community, we don't have one local news coverage, whether newspaper or newscasting. No one is here recording this in its entirety in audio or video, and I think that is an absolute crime in this modern age. It's the 21st century. Everyone's got an iPad, a cellphone, and it's not even, how have you seen communities like this before that have been this messed up and this corrupt? And have you seen them turn around? And how?
Just, we do, this meeting has been recorded and we do take minutes for these meetings, so, and they are available, you know, the standard ways for public request. So if you could-
I'll be as brief as I can. Have I seen communities like Youngstown? Yes. And just, with all respect, the fact that we all are special, all of our communities are special, and we all have special concerns and interests and needs. In terms of the term corruption, I use the term, the thing that I focus on and our organization focuses on, and we suggest that the communities focus on, is the systemic problems. That, you know, I think that even if we came up with a perfect system, we'd probably have some dishonest people. But I think our largest problem is that the system as it's built allows people to act who are in office against the best interests of their constituents. Not, it's, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not what's illegal that is the biggest problem. And I don't mean that in terms of council. I mean that in terms of even-
It goes up to the president.
I mean in terms of the industry, for instance. What the industry does that's harmful. It's not, yes, they do break the law. Yes, they do dump their toxic stuff into our streams when we're not looking or on our roads and so forth. But it's not even so much what they do that's illegal that's the worst of it. It's what's been legalized. And it's not so much that our local and state governments are corrupt. And yeah, I come from Pennsylvania. Have you read the news lately? But, you know, the fact is that if we spend our time chasing malfeasance at the, you know, at whatever level, if we go after personalities, instead of changing the system so that it can work for us, we will never really get out of the hole we're in. And that doesn't mean that corruption shouldn't be challenged and so forth. But as community members, rather than focusing on personalities, I think we need to be focusing on the system and changing it. And our strategy, frankly, over the past 40 years as activists of one sort or another, environmentalists and so forth, if it was working so darn well, the environment would be a lot more healthy. It's not working. So I'm suggesting that we don't get distracted. Yeah, there are some dishonest people and I don't, and present company not included because I don't, I just don't know anybody. It's not about the people in the room. It's about what makes sense? What do we want to spend our time chasing? And if we want to spend our time chasing dishonest people, bad news is we're never going to stop. Well, let's fix the system and then we'll go after the corruption.
Thank you. And if we could-
My name's Chris Compercobb. I live on the west side. I just wanted to state that the citizens of Youngstown really want this rights-based ban. We right now have over 500 signatures supporting the ban, and we have many more coming in. This is something we really want, and we're asking city council to enact it. If city council refuses to do the right thing and enact this ban, I guess my question is, what do we do with these signatures? I mean, is there anything else we can do with them?
Well, for as much as you've probably had to sweat in the summer heat to collect them, if you want to put a question on the ballot, it requires a specific petition, legal petition. There's a process for it. There's a window of opportunity for you to collect signatures.
And that's actually been a topic, if you read the papers, with the charter amendments. And in our, one of our legislation committee meetings recently, that was asked. We brought in the director of the Board of Election, Joyce Calpesta, to explain the process to get something on the ballot. So there's a required number of signatures, a timeframe that it has to be there. And the Board of Election is a great resource for that, to figure out those steps, so.
And Legal Defense Fund is happy to assist in some of that research for you. We, in Pennsylvania, we've worked with a number of communities that have put community bills of rights on their ballot and have adopted them and put them, and made them part of their charter as opposed to simply an ordinance.
And I think that's important, and thank you for bringing that up, is, you know, there's multiple ways to address this. And rights are not being taken away. There's still another way to access that or get that law passed. Thank you. Wrapping up, Mr. President, any other comments from my committee before we enclose?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. Number one, you talked about discussing with other communities, you know, what they're thinking and how they're feeling about it. You mentioned that I think there were twelve other communities and how that you were working with. Would you be able to share those communities with us?
I'm not sure. I mean, there is, essentially have kind of a client relationship with them, and I would have to get an okay with them. And in some cases, it's included city council members, and other cases, it's included community groups.
Okay. Yeah, and if you can, if you get that okay, if you can share that information with us, that would be great.
Okay.
Because I would like to have discussion with them. Number two, I just want to make sure I was clear on one thing. Would we be the first community to adopt a rights-based ban that extended beyond our jurisdiction?
No. And Pittsburgh in Pennsylvania did it kind of in two steps. They passed the community bill of rights and a ban on extraction of gas. And then they passed a second ordinance with, and enumerated some other rights that actually this ordinance has some of them in it. And it dealt with the, it specified that if there's toxic trespass from fracking outside of the city, which is banned in the city, that, okay, they can't ban the drilling outside the city, but what they can do is hold liable the parties involved in the fracking outside the city for the poisoning of their residents or their natural environment.
Councilman Swires?
First of all, I just want to thank everybody for coming out here. You know, it's two hours now. We're into this almost, and, you know, and I'm going to finish like what I started, Dr. Ray. You know, I was totally impressed out of the numbers that are here that a great majority is, was the city of Youngstown. And, you know, this, we know this is a regional issue, not just a Youngstown issue, but I was just totally impressed, and that's why I wanted to ask that question.
Thank you. Any other members of council? We did the question. Next on our list is to, the agenda is set a next meeting. I think we will postpone that, setting a next meeting of this committee till we have some more things, our own work to do before we're ready to do that. Also, I do have some thanks, obviously, Ben Price, the Community and Environmental Legal Defense Fund for coming out. Also-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Also, the residents of the city of Youngstown that helped make this possible. I worked with Susie Byersdorff and Lynn Anderson. They kind of spearheaded this, and thank you for that. And also and the citizens that organized this also came up with the money for the expenses. So I just, you know, we, as council, wanted to give the opportunity to bring in the people wanted. So I guess this was a good collaboration of, you know, government and people working together. So. And our staff, our city clerk, Valencia, thank you for coming out on a Sunday, and our city hall staff and security back there too. And six of the seven council members are present. Just want you to realize that, so. Again, we, this, I wish, you know, we could say we could close this topic, and when we slam the gavel down today, we could all go on our way. But this is, again, the beginning of a process and something we're working through together. And we're trying to do the best we can. We understand our rights. We take our jobs very seriously. And we do have that balance between, you know, protecting the city, protecting the citizens, and we weigh those very heavily, and we're always considering those things. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. We're adjourned at 3:05 PM. Thank you and enjoy the rest of your afternoon.